March 15th. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Fuller.
Here.
Mr. Coleman.
Here.
Ms. Matroni. Or Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Van Huzen. Mr. Weber.
Here.
Here.
We'll separate you guys. If you're able, please stand and join me in saying the Pud's allegiance.
The Pud's allegiance to the body of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Invisible liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Minutes of the House of Representatives from March 15th.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe everyone has received a copy of the meeting minutes and as well as our special meeting. If there is no objections, we will consider the meeting minutes for March 1st, 2022 for a special public hearing as well as the meeting minutes for March 1st, 2022 for City Council, three as written.
No objections? Good, thank you. Special reports? We know any special reports? Whether it's communications, citizen concern? If anybody wants to speak? All right. If not, with the mystery of reports. Mayor's report, you should have all gotten the memo from State of Ohio and the support for that. Richard, do you want to address any of that or do we just want to?
I'm going to talk to her about Chief Jones. I could explain it, but he's the one where he's been working in forties for three months.
So what you were given was probably 120 pages of documentation from the state and I'm sure every one of you have read it cover to cover.
I tried.
Name a page. Got it memorized.
Twice.
But basically, this was the settlement with Big Pharma over opioid settlement that the state came up with. There are some things that we would need to do, actually you would need to do as council to authorize us to take part in this settlement. There would be some resolutions that would need to be passed, which we don't have those tonight, but I can work with Ms. Sandretto get those done for the next meeting. But basically, there's a whole lot of math that goes into it. And so this morning's divided up. Part of it going to the state, part of it going to the AG's office for.
You are the only participant in the conference. Please press any key on your keypad to remain in the conference.
Part of it goes, 15% goes to the AG's offices as council for the settlement. And then 30% goes to local governments. And so that's divided out by cities and townships. And so basically, what it comes down to is this is going to be divided up over 18 years. So our total amount of this would be $139,864.80, which divided over 18 years is $7,000 a year. Now, there's only limited things we can use this for. But the one thing that we could use it for that would be appropriate would be the purchase of Narcan. Narcan, we budgeted about $10,000 a year to purchase that. This would offset a big chunk of that. And Narcan is something that does expire, so we can't just keep it forever. You have to get to replenish it every year. So this is what we'd be able to use that for. So there would be some, a resolution, a council authorizing the city to enter into this agreement. And then also a couple of the resolutions that would basically authorize us to participate in the region that we're a part of for this, for additional funding that could be, that we could receive from this. But at a minimum, it'd be, you know, that amount over 18 years, about $7,700 a year.
Any questions?
No.
Doesn't sound like there's any reason not to move forward with this.
I think it's a good, good place to spend it.
Is there a deadline?
Oh, when do we have to approve it by?
No, the money hasn't been dispersed yet. So they wanted it sooner than later, obviously, because they needed 95% of the municipalities and townships in Ohio to participate. I believe they have that. So this is just a matter of us doing our, you know, sign on the dotted lines and we can partake in it.
So there's no timeline at all to try to get this through or?
Sooner than later. The sample resolution that the state gave us suggested passing it as an emergency so we can move forward with it, which is what I would suggest, so we can have documentation prepared for the next council meeting.
Hopefully, everything will be ready and have a conversation in Safety Committee, possibly on those.
We could.
Certainly, and the resolution.
Any other question? Richard, would you? I don't have anything else, but I want to report on the oil we are in the Dora.
Okay, I can report on that as well. I wanted to first mention the water tower. Councilman Smith mentioned something before the meeting. Happy to give an update on that. The contracting company, Seven Brothers, has actually utilized their own drone, has taken pictures and video of the water tower. They're sent, they gave that to their graphic artists. Their graphic artist is putting together what it would take for them to reproduce that in order then for them to give us a written proposal. Along with that, we asked them to give us a written proposal on the suggestion or modification or recommendation that Councilman Weber gave. So we're also getting a price on that as well. And as soon as we receive them, we will certainly send that out to City Council. So we're still waiting on that. And we do have a pre-construction meeting on that project, March 31st. And that's when the actual work will be lined up in terms of the timeline of the start of the project. The good thing is, is that this is one of the last pieces of the puzzle. It's not the first piece that needs to happen to prepare the water tower, so we still have ample time. When it comes to Dora, we, we, City Administration, are in receipts of a application from Levis Commons. And that actually came in this morning. So we are doing our due diligence for the mayor, reviewing it, putting together a recommendation as we have for the other Doras. That is something that our Law Director will be working on tomorrow, this week and next week with city staff. And our goal is to get that to Safety Committee as a starting point of conversation, but to formally give that to City Council as soon as the legislation is in effect at the state level, which I believe is next week, the date after the Safety Committee meeting. But we figure we would talk about it at the Safety Committee as well, since we're already having one. And then we're also working on a presentation for expanding the existing Dora that we plan on bringing to the Safety Committee next week as well. Because if that is something that the Safety Committee is interested in, we would like the two applications to move along in the same timeline and the same schedule. Because you may recall that there's quite a few timelines in there, and we didn't want to have two or three going at the same time and confuse ourselves or the applicants. So those are moving forward, both with the Levis Commons as well as with the expanded. And our first stop will be to get those formally to you prior to the, well, actually, they'll go to Safety first, even though it's not the official effective date of the state legislation. And then we will formally give you the Levis Commons application the day after with a recommendation from Mayor Athens. So hopefully, that answers those questions.
What is the timeline from committee level to enforcement?
The clock starts ticking when City Council receives a formal application from the mayor. So we want to do that next Wednesday, I believe, which is the first official day that that goes into effect at the state level. And then I believe the timeline is, City Council has to have a hearing no sooner than 45 days, but no later than 60 days prior to receiving its submission from the mayor's office. So what Kate will do is she'll put together a timeline and put all the milestones and the meetings in there for that. But when we were doing, I'll say, back of the notebook, look at the calendar last Friday as we were talking with Levis Commons. It looked like if all went well, it would be like the very first week of July, possibly?
For Levis, I assume.
For Levis and for an expanded, because you still have to follow the same process of to expand a Dora as it is to create a new Dora, is my understanding. So that's why we want to have them move simultaneously together.
Okay, is that something Kate has looked into?
Yes.
Can she provide a?
Yes, a timeline for that as well.
Yeah, because if we can move the expansion quicker than the other one, I'd like to know that.
If the law permits, we are prepared to do so. And I think we're still also waiting for feedback from the school board as well.
Gotcha.
Did we hear from the library?
I believe that somebody spoke with the library, I think it was Kate, and they did not have an issue. And she also spoke with the property owner at the corner of Indiana and 199 with the large building, the L-shaped building, Perry's Landing. And that owner had no issue. I think we're just waiting on the school, they were going to have discussions at an upcoming school board meeting. So we're just waiting on feedback from them before we put together that final expansion application.
End of your report.
Yes.
Finance director.
I have no report.
And Law Director has no report. President of Council?
Thank you, Mayor. As soon as my questions were answered, I have no report or no questions either.
Committee reports. We'll start with the finance.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance and Economic Development Committee met March 8th. Meeting was called to order at 5:36 PM by Chairman Mark Weber. Committee members present were myself, Jonathan Smith, and Tim McCarthy. Also present were Kate Sandretto, Law Director, Amber Rathburn, Finance Director, and Kayla Trego, Deputy Finance Director. There were no, there were being no objections in minutes of February 8th. Meeting were approved 3-0. And the CRA transfer, Glenn Grisdale, principal at Reveal, Reveal, Revel? How do you say it, Richard? Reveal?
Revel.
Revelly. Oh, I got that all wrong. Anyway, he's the economic development consultant for the city of Perrysburg, stated that the property owner of 7045 Lighthouse Way within a signed CRA with the St. Luke's McLaren Hospital sold the property to SEP Perrysburg M O B L L C. As a housekeeping measure, the CRA agreement needs to be transferred to the new property owner. The affected school districts are aware of this transfer and amended school donation agreements will be prepared. This legislation will have no immediate financial impact on the city. I asked if this happens often where CRA agreement is transferred to a new property owner. And Mr. Grisdale stated that this has happened three or four times previously. Mr. Smith wanted to know if there was any reason to not transfer a CRA. And Mr. Grisdale said that this is really just a housekeeping measure, and no, there would be not any, no reason to not re-sign. Committee agreed 3-0 to recommend this to City Council. On the annual street tree assessment, Ms. Rathburn stated that this is a housekeeping measure for the purpose of maintaining and planting street trees in the public right of way. Street tree assessment is a one-year assessment, as it's expected to generate approximately $70,000 in revenue. Mr. Smith was curious if we still receive recognition as a tree city, since we are putting the money aside for it. Ms. Rathburn stated that she will check with Rob Ross, Director of Public Service. There was a discussion regarding the number of readings for this legislation. There will be one, there will be one reading unless something comes up during discussion of the first reading. The committee agreed 3-0 to recommend this to City Council. The Investment Advisory Services Agreement, Ms. Rathburn explained that Finance issued a request for qualifications, RFQ, and advertised it in the Messenger Journal for two weeks as required. Five responses were received from investment firms. It was recommended to the committee that the city use the services of UBS Financial Services. They offered the lowest fees with custodial services being included in those fees. They also have extensive experience with public funds and municipal investing. Some of UBS Financial Services references included metro parks, Toledo Public Schools, Finley City Schools, and the cities of Oregon, Waterville, Salamia, Mahoney, and Northwood. So Mr. McCarthy wanted to know what we would be investing. Ms. Rathburn explained that the ORC is very specific as to what municipalities can invest in, and it includes CDs, treasury securities, and commercial paper. I asked what their fee would be to us. Ms. Rathburn estimated that on 25 million invested, their fee would be 7,500 per year. Mr. Smith asked to see the summary sheet of the five submissions. And Amber sent those the next day to us. Thank you, Amber. The committee agreed 3-0 to recommend this to City Council. Levis Commons Assessment, Ms. Rathburn stated that in 2006, there was a cooperative agreement entered into the city, into, by the city of Perrysburg, the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority and Levis Town Square Land LLC. The Port Authority issued bonds to finance the project, which were assessed through the city to property owner. The Hilton Garden Inn was sold in November 21, and with the sale price including the remaining balance of the bonds. However, due to the timing of the sale, the new owner of the property received a tax bill in January, and it included the fees and special assessments for the bonds. So this ordinance would remove the special assessment lien on the property due to payment in full. The money was owed directly to the bond company. This cannot be removed from the taxes for the first half of the year. Mr. Smith wanted to know if we could discuss a remedy to avoid this situation in the future. Ms. Sandretto stated that this is an ORC and auditor issue, so it's not in our jurisdiction to control. Committee agreed 3-0 to pass this on to Council. On the ARPA funds, Mr. Smith proposed that City Council pass a resolution in the interest of transparency, and that City Council as a whole should have a discussion regarding these funds. Mr. McCarthy stated that this matter definitely needs a second reading at least, which Mr. Smith and I agreed with. Mr. Smith would like these funds used in a once-in-a-lifetime way by doing something more permanent, like the McKinley Woods Park area. Ms. Rathburn wanted to note that some of the items on the proposed use of funds list do not specifically fall under the categories that are allowed as expenses. However, up to $10 million is now allowed to be used for revenue replacement, which allows municipalities to then technically spend the money on anything that is a government service, which all items on the current list are. Mr. Smith wanted to make note of the bathrooms at Rotary Park and looking into a potential of keeping those open year-round by adding heat. The committee agreed 3-0 to recommend this on City Council. The Finance Director's report, Ms. Rathburn answered several questions from the committee members. Mr. Smith is thrilled, just thrilled to see the purchase of a kayak launch for. Ms. Rathburn noted that the city received a grant from Wood County for a portion of the launch. Ms. Rathburn stated that February income tax revenue was up 102% from February of 21. However, there are two payments which totaled 1.4 million that the Tax Division is anticipating they may have to refund. It may or may not have been an error. That's to be determined by the state. In other business, Mr. Smith would like to have a conversation about Airbnbs and wants to explore if we should include them in the bed tax, since they have nightly rates like a hotel. He was hoping that Ms. Sandretto could look into the legality of that and what other communities may be doing. Ms. Sandretto said that the state is looking at legislation to limit the city's ability to regulate Airbnbs. There being no further business, the meeting adjourned at 6:43. So I have some legislation here. The first resolution is for the annual street tree assessment. That's typically voted on at the first reading, but at the committee level, we decided to ask Council if anyone would rather wait until the second or third readings before moving for passage. So I prepared, if anyone wants me to just do one reading here, I'll do that. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Do the first reading then.
Just do the first reading for now, and then we can have.
Discussion.
Discussion about that, okay. Well, I'd like to introduce Resolution 23-2022 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Resolution 23, 2022. A resolution declaring it necessary to provide for removal and special treatment of shade trees and controlling the blight and disease of same for the planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing shade trees in and along the streets and within public right-of-way of the city of Perrysburg.
Do we have any discussions?
Well, like Ms. Rathburn said, it is more of a housekeeping measure with being an annual assessment, but we, this doesn't go on the ballot, but we just do want to make sure that the public has a chance to speak on it if they want themselves. Hold on that for the next two weeks, and I can have another reading next meeting. All right. Okay, moving on. I'd like to introduce Resolution 24-2022. Move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Resolution 24, 2022. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an investment management agreement with UBS Financial Services for investment advisory services and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution 24-2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Just go ahead. Ashen, roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Hey, I would like to introduce Resolution 25-2022 for its first reading and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Resolution 25, 2022. A resolution declaring City Council intended use for coronavirus, state and local fiscal recovery, AKA ARPA funds.
Anyone want to discuss anything on the list? All right.
It's a big opportunity if anybody has any concerns. I know we've talked about this in numerous committees. And we do see on this updated one, we have the design fees for the passive park in McKinley Woods on there. There is still a balance left over. My thought process with this, if anybody has any objections on this, let me know, is once we have McKinley Woods designs, those fees can go into, or the extra balance that's available, since it's an unknown.
You're looking at that 376,000.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of giving, moving ahead with something over and that McKinley Woods area is the right place, fine. I mean, I think we've talked for more than one year about the need for some better. Now Rotary Park helped us a lot, but even more, located more centrally in the western side of town. I'm happy to see that McKinley Woods, at least we're good to start on it. We may have the means to begin to think about a meaningful effort at getting it done.
Some regards to the estimated balance available, would we, I don't know, I know the regulations for the ARPA fund is pretty strict. Would any of that, would any of that leftover money that we haven't allocated yet be able to be used for the water tower project?
My recollection is it can be used for water and sewer projects, but I would have to work with Amber and Kayla on defining what constitutes a water and sewer project.
Yeah, I believe it said infrastructure. We can look at that, but I'm not sure that would be included.
If it's income replacement, though, wouldn't that?
I guess that was kind of my, raise that question if the rules kind of changed.
But it's. Can be utilized for utility projects, such as utility fund campaigns for general fund funded projects. But whether an infrastructure project is paid for, that's something that we have to understand as an issue.
Well, you also have the larger question of, I'll talk to you about it, taking general fund monies for utility purpose, which gets into, which may or may not, Council may choose that to be the right choice, but I would have some concern that you're taking money out of general fund when there are funds from utilities that pay for utilities. That's just a bit for Council to consider.
I'd just like to see used for that if possible.
Well, we did have budgeted, I think.
I don't.
At 800,000, so I think we have the money there if we really want it. I like, I like the general theme. It looks like we're using this for a lot of outdoor and recreational investments, which is, I, these projects are much easier when there's kind of extra money coming in to take on those projects. So I like the general theme of that. If not, the McKinley Woods project, I would like to see, and I know we're exploring this and other budget line items, but multi-use paths as always, improving those and making them, so.
Well, it's nice that we do have on there LED lights for the Roachden multi-use path on there to keep that well lit. I know that the paths are well-used quite often, especially in the evening. I've used it before, so having those lights would avoid any trip hazards.
Well, and how quickly do those LED lights pay for themselves, basically?
Oh.
The initial, the large value amount that you see here, which is converting all of our LED, all of our streetlights to LED, like streetlights, 99% of them belongs to for the Edison, but if a program where you can pay them to go in and convert them to LED and that kind of payback, it's either just under five years or just over five.
That's, that's awesome. I love that.
And then savings for everyone.
Yeah.
That's a smart move, yeah.
And it's, we're not going to run into the same issues that Toledo ran into when they first implemented, probably about like 10 years ago.
Well, hopefully.
No. They know there's, ended up being more costly than it was saving.
And we do have a proposal from State of West City. We're working with Palmer Energy Consultants to make sure that it is an appropriate proposal and that in terms of conditions that are favorable to the city.
For those who aren't aware, I don't know how many people have a copy of this in front of them, but there's LED streetlight conversion, a upgrade of the Fort Imagination Playground in Woodlands Park to, as an all-inclusive playground, a new playground for municipal park, a new playground for bicentennial, the new Rotary Pickle Ball Court amenities. So once that goes in there, some upgrades for that as well. LED streetlights for the multi-use path in Roachden, some fencing for playgrounds and woodland parks, as well as three meadows, upgrading some of our pedestrian crossings, as well as the design fees from McKinley Woods. And there's some balance left over that hopefully we can use to finish developing McKinley Woods there, so. Fair to just read it out for the record for anybody in case they don't have it in front of them. But all in all, I think it's a, it's a great investment in the community, and I think we'll have returns on most of this.
It's something that everyone in the community will get something out of.
Yeah.
And those are permanent, so that's, it's just.
Is there a reason why Dog Park didn't make the cut?
So in the, we're still having some conversations on Orleans Park. We sat through a presentation. I know that that was one of the items on the table there. So once we get through some design phases on that, and I'm sure Bridget can touch on that, but that was one of the things I'm pushing to see if we can put that in Orleans. So it may not be on here, but there's going to be some plans, hopefully in the near future to have that.
That's just curious.
Which is kind of a brilliant place for it, if you ask me, because the shade, it's not just going to be, you know, fenced in area of grass. It seems like they can have some cooler ways to implement that into Orleans Park, so.
We'll just kind of, kind of explain, the administration's working on, developing in a kind of sort of passive, consistent with the nature environment at Wood Park. And so we've started some designs of that in committee then that last Thursday. That was about right. And to kind of discuss some of the various options, some of the different components.
Hood or Orleans? You said hood.
It's Orleans, sorry.
Yeah, Orleans, okay, that's my thought, all right.
Orleans Park and then, then also the items that we've provided as a list, we thought was the most, the Council contributed a lot of suggestions to it, but we felt it was the best use of the funds, because it would be a lot of permanent improvements. They would all be mostly parks and other type of activities, or other ones that had clear cost savings to the community. And it would not just be one targeted area, but it would be throughout the entire community would benefit, not just one particular section. So we're very pleased, Council had a lot of good suggestions, and we think we've incorporated them in the use of the funds, so. We'll have more on all those, so. And I'm definitely a big Dog Park proponent. I think I brought that up numerous times in Recreation with you, but that's one thing that's coming in in this Orleans, possibly with the plan. And what was nice with that is on one of the designs, it was going to be, as Corey mentioned, in a shaded area underneath, so that way it wasn't just the dogs from baking in the sun out there.
You more thrilled about that or the kayak bad?
Oh, I'm, as Mark said, I am more than thrilled thrilled. I think you used that word twice on the.
I approve those. I approve of the report. I didn't want to take that out.
Have you seen the dog parks of Toledo? Neither one have a lot of shade. One has, I think it's just like tree to tree. One has, I don't.
This will make it unique if we end up going forward with that, so.[1701.38] This will make it unique if we end up going forward with that, so. But there's some plans hopefully coming down the work on that, or down the pike, I should say.
Very good. Any other discussion?
We'll have another reading next time. Okay, the next two ordinances have no financial impact on the city, so if there's no objections, I'll introduce those together. Hearing none, I would like to introduce ordinances 14 and 15, 2022. Move that the rules be suspended to allow for the readings by number and title only, and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Mcaturney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance 14, 2022, and ordinance emitting ordinance 80, 2017, approving a community reinvestment area agreement with State of West Hospital, McLaren, and S U P Parisburg N L D LLC, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 15, 2022, and ordinance repealing ordinance number 135, 2006, and 205, 2006, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to cause determination of cooperative agreement entered into with the Toledo Lucas County Port Authority, and further authorizing the city administrator and the director of finance to send notice of this termination to the Wood County Auditor and other parties, as the case may be, and declaring an emergency.
I move that ordinances 14 and 15 dash 2022 be passed as emergency measures.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Mcaturney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
All right, next meeting for our Finance and Economic Development is Tuesday, April 12th at 5:30 PM. That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Safety Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next, there is no report, our next meeting will be the 22nd, Tuesday at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Recreation?
Thank you, Mayor. There, Recreation does not have report as well. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 12th at 6:30 PM.
Very good, thank you. Planning and zoning?
Thank you, Your Honor. We met on March 2nd at 5:30, President and myself, Barry Van Hoozen and Cora Flumin, also Brody Walters and Mark Easterling, our Planning and Zoning Department representatives. There were no citizen's, well, there were figures concerned for that under that title. We approved the minutes of the February meeting, and then we moved on to discussion of the land use plan update, more particularly the Heights component of that. Leia, is Mark helping with the pronunciation of her name? Leia, Hansay?
Hansay DeLeo.
DeLeo. That was President, she and she and other residents of the Heights have done a ton of research. They've reached out to legal and development organizations nationwide. They don't care what people do with their homes, but they want to stop commercial development from encroaching in their neighborhood. Leia stated that they will develop their own plan and that the city will have to answer to them. She said that the city should defy any annexation into the city if it is for commercial use. I asked why the city should tell those who want to annexate to the city how they should develop the property. Anita Sirdan was present, she commented that it's important to retain the existing character of the neighborhood, along with the short and long-term interest of the community. She asked that the committee amendment plan to recognize the Heights as a residential area with very limited flexibility. Karen B. Belsky was present, and she is saddened and distraught over the project, and she said it's the first time she's been proud to be a member of the community. I stated that the city is not using utility service to force annexations, and that we will not be using eminent domain. The city is not a commercial developer, instead of trying to adopt a land use plan that works best for the overall development community. A gentleman from the audience asked what he and his wife should do when their property is taken for commercial development. My response is that the way he could prevent that from occurring is by not selling his property. Theresa Akax confirmed that she does, like sometimes the land use plan, which he was appalled by the statement of, don't sell. She stated that this will force people out of their homes and essentially end their community, and she wanted to know how much the city would make off of these. Brody Walters said that the land use plan is a plan for the city in the future. Plan consultants and experience made sure to include the water sewer service area for the city as the planning area in the land use plan. He stated that it is appropriate to plan for areas outside of the city, and he said that it was direct request of Paul Belazos that the Heights be included in the land use plan. Brody went on to explain that the city is not an act or engaging in commercial development, rather its role is to respond to requests by private properties, or private parties, I should say, seeking to annex their property and or seeking a zoning change to accommodate the use that they feel will be best for their property. The land use plan is a guide for the city to usually respond to such requests in an orderly and planned fashion that best serves overall community interests. Mr. Coleman commented that he would respect the wishes of residents if the Heights does not want to be part of the land use plan. He encouraged them to do their due diligence in creating their own plan and getting that locked in with the township trustees. Paul Belazos was present, he stated he never requested the land use plan include the expansion of commercial development in the Heights. Also, he never requested that the Heights be turned over to high-end expensive residential development, as was envisioned in the first version of the plan. As he put it, that version was directly agreed. He stated pointed out that homeownership has always been a high priority in the Heights community. Paul added that not a single person in the community has spoken in favor of this. Mr. Van Hoozen stated it was clear the Heights does not want to be part of the plan, however, he feels inclined to include them in order to protect them. The committee did vote 3-0 to recommend removal of the Heights as a focus area from the land use plan. We did not recommend the limited commercial development, or so-called Brody plan, that's what we named it, in which a street line to the east of the existing commercial, commercial development constitutes a boundary beyond which there will be no more commercial development, because that would mean there's 33 current homes potentially being affected. There is a potential third option of leaving only existing commercial development, essentially in its only its current footprint, and that was not voted on. When land use proceeds to this group for consideration, all options will be presented for discussion. And after we talked a little bit about the procedure, it was explained that the land use plan will be presented to council at its second meeting in April, at the earliest, or perhaps in May. In both lay and Paul Belazos would give an advance notification of the date council will take up the matter. After a brief recess, we turn to the subject of proposed code amendments that will change the square footage distinction between small gyms and large gyms from more or less 5,000 square feet to more or less than 12,000 square feet. Currently, gyms less than 5,000 square feet are permitted in the office service or OS the owning district, but everything larger is not. The amendments will categorize gyms up to 12,000 square feet as permitted in OS. At a prior meeting, Matt Tendy, owner of All Health and Fitness, and that's her tonight, discussed changes in the gym fitness industry that now include a type of gym on the order of 10 to 12,000 square feet, in which participants are actively assisted and trained by fitness personnel, as opposed to the big box gyms like Planet Fitness that simply provide exercise equipment for self-use. He, Matt, that has urged that this new version of gyms would be compatible with a wider range of zoning districts, including OS. Mr. Walters stated that each of the proposals, there's four interlocking proposals here, achieve what Matt Tendy, owner of All Fitness, looking for, and he agreed these do get the change, they get the job done, and he felt they accomplish the goals and protect the neighbors at 12,000 square feet. He also asked that the city should always do more to be business friendly, as he has faced the whole of that issue this entire process. Now, I had on my to-do list that I didn't get to do, was that this has to have a public hearing on April 5. Kate included in our packets ordinances 16 through 18. I'd suggest I won't introduce those tonight. The plan was to get this approved as quickly as we could, but I don't, I don't think I know we should be approving this in advance of the public hearing, so I will introduce these on April 5. There's been some confusion around this, because at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, this leads to a second item on my to-do list, the Planning Commission, Matt may be the one who can help us remember this, the Planning Commission had wanted that cutoff to not be 12,000 square feet, one member at least wanted it 10,000 square feet. The committee, what we had looked at and acted upon that night was to go with 12,000 square feet. And, but I see in the ordinances that we have in our packet that there are some references to 10,000 square feet. The thing we didn't know that night was whether council had to send us back to the Planning Commission again, or whether we had the power, the power under our power to modify or amend to simply go with 12,000 square feet. Kate advised us that we can do that, but the ordinance needed to move it clean enough because there's some more updated references to 10,000 square feet.
I believe we did land on 10,000, Tim, or at least that was my impression, because we were tying into some of the other commercial lots that are 10,000, which is why.
Well, that's what Barry and I got into marriage for earlier. We were trying to compare notes, and it was not where we landed on that issue.
We, we ended up going with 10,000, because we, it was between the 5,000 and from Planning Commission and the 12,000 that Matt had presented, but one of the members from the Planning Commission, if I recall correctly, had suggested 10,000 because of some other commercial lots. I think there's a lot of references to 10,000 square feet in commercial lots.
And if I recall that conversation, it was, so the reason we would not have to go back to the public hearing was because we were going to approve something that the Planning Commission agreed to under special use at 10,000.
Well, it's, it has to have a public hearing, the council.
Does it?
But we don't have to go back to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
I think that was.
It was my understanding that it, what's in front of us tonight, what has already met the public hearing requirement, because we did that before last council meeting, and that's technically the one we were mending at.
And we thought that it would be acceptable to the Planning Commission.
Well, and the Planning Commission had already reviewed and recommended.
At 10,000.
Mending.
Okay, okay.
So we had met both those requirements, is my understanding.
Bridgette's not even there, so.
I can say that both, both the law director, myself, and the Planning and Zoning Administrator watched that meeting again, several times that section, and it was clear that the committee was looking at modifying what had gone to public hearing under your authority, and that you landed on the 10,000, because that was something that there was discussion at the Planning Commission level, that that would be acceptable to several of the members, the $10,000, 10,000 square foot threshold versus the 12,000.
That sounds familiar, very well.
Yeah, no, I, that's, I agree.
That was our read of taking notes after watching like a two-minute segment out of your hour or two.
I think this modification was designed to meet all those requirements. I have to have it in a public meeting.
So then it didn't have to enter the public hearing, did it have to enter the Planning Commission, or did it not need for a public hearing?
Correct. I think what we were trying to set this up for is for Matt's next meeting, where he can have site plans ready for that. We were just trying to get this out of the way for him.
Yeah.
And obviously address some of the issues with our code being outdated in the meantime, so. That's my recollection.
Sounds good, we'll go ahead and introduce them then.
I agree.
Finally, we, the Planning Commission had granted a conditional approval for the site plan amendment and special approval use for Rotary Community Master Plan. This is basically an addition of a pickleball court pending the parking lot update review. The committee agreed 2-0, Barry is a member of Rotary, and we stand to recommend this approval of the special use, special approval use to council, and that will come as ordinance 19. And so then, now that we've clarified what's going on with gyms, I'd like to introduce ordinance numbers 16, 17, and 18, 2022, and both of those will be amended to operating by number and title only, as described for the second and third reading.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Mcaturney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance 16, 2022, admitting classified zoning ordinance 1225.08, land use chart of City of Parisburg zoning code. Ordinance 18, 2022, admitting classified zoning ordinance 1235.04, special approval uses of the City of Parisburg's zoning code.
I would then move that the ordinance in 16, 17, and 18, 2022 be passed as emergency, not just be passed.
Second. Question. Roll call.
Ms. Mcaturney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to introduce ordinance 19 dash 2022, and will those be suspended for offer at 3-0 by number and title only, to dispense with the second and third reading.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Mcaturney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Same.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Same.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance 19, 2022, granting special approval use for the City of Parisburg for the construction of pickleball courts at Rotary Community Hall.
I would then move that ordinance 19 dash 2022 be passed.
Second.
Discussion. Just a quick discussion, I know, I know part of our new council rules stated that parks, changes in amendments should be going to Recreation Committee, but with further conversation that we had since two of the members of the committee have to abstain, there is not a way that this could be discussed actually in full at the actual committee. So I think that this would be the appropriate one, but moving forward, a conversation of how administration will make sure that everything does end up in Recreation as well, Only comment I have, everyone knows what my vote's going to be, so.
Any other discussion, if not, roll call.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Mcaturney?
Yes.
End of report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. We met on March 3rd, meeting was called to order at 4:06 by myself, committee members present, were Kevin Buller and Tim McCarthy as well. Also present were Bridgette Cabot, Kate Sandretto, Amber Rathburn, and Miss Gillen, the legal intern. There were no citizen's concerns, we approved the prior month's minutes, and then we reviewed proposed updates, the second, 266, that vote. Ms. Cabot stated that they are, they are not looking for consideration or recommendation today, they want to give an overview of what was, what has been accomplished with these last ordinances. Ms. Cabot stated that they've been trying to accommodate how to give benefits to employees based on the pay ban structure. Ms. Cabot added that they are looking to eliminate all designations of executive staff, senior administrative staff, administrative staff, and special support staff. This will be eliminated and replaced with pay ban language, so that it is consistent with what the pay scale now looks like. Ms. Cabot stated that when the city is posting for a job opening, they want to be sure they have a flexible pay scale and benefits commiserate from a governmental or quasi-governmental agency. I was curious if ordinance 266.09-1 subsection C, if there was a way to make that number four relating to pay ban E a scale or percentage rather than flat. Ms. Rathburn will look into this matter, and if there's some sort of index to tie it to. The committee members asked the administration if they could work on the wording of 266.09-2 subsection E with Michelle Font. Ms. Cabot and the committee members had some discussion regarding organization charts, which have since been sent to us, and the city taking a look at redoing ours. Then we reviewed the status of the deputy city administrator's position. Ms. Cabot would like to do the org chart, which we now have, and see what opportunities there are for this new position to be doing. I would like this left on the agenda ongoing, so that the committee can receive those updates. I believe the city is too reliant on Ms. Cabot, she takes on a lot of responsibilities, and she needs someone to assist her. It's also good for succession planning. Then we reviewed the charter review process. Ms. Sandretto stated that the charter review happens every 10 years for the city, and that we had one in 2018. City council has the ability to amend the charter, and it should be cheaper this year with the general election, I'll throw that in there. Ms. Sandretto stated that we should embrace the charter and change as little as possible, and the ordinances are where we could make changes. She asked that if we choose to amend the charter, that it be for a very good reason. Mr. McCarthy does not think that the law director should report to the city administrator. Mr. Coleman would like this left on the agenda as well. There was no other business, and the meeting was adjourned at 5:08. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 22nd, but I kind of wanted to pick your brain on that one for a bit. Is that too soon? Are we just going to have 266 on the, well, I guess we'll have those two other standing items.
We'll have the two standing items, we'll have the new proposed language for a couple of the sections of 266 that we discussed, the one that they were doing a little research on, as well as the vacation time.
Will that be time enough for an update on the deputy administrative, administrative position?
Okay.
Okay, we'll keep that meeting time then for the time being, for Tuesday, March 2nd at 5:00 PM, and nothing further.
Thank you. Public Utilities. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. No report today. Our next scheduled meeting is March 23rd, 6:30 PM.
Service committee?
No report. I would like to thank the Recreation Division of the Service Department for putting the net pickleball. Pickleball court nets up. Next meeting, I have no report. The next meeting is March 23rd at 5:30. And thank you to utility for voting for me.
Yeah, alright, thank you. Any other business for council?
I have one comment to say, and I attended a school board meeting yesterday, at which time I heard this speech by a young gentleman who's a freshman in high school. And if half our citizens could be as brave and articulate as that young man, then we're going to have a good future.
They unanimously passed that measure?
Yes, they did. That young man is very impressive and very brave. I don't know if I could have done that at this age.
I think we'd be, I'd be remiss not, I thoroughly enjoyed watching the wrestling program rustle all weekend. And just a shout out to those guys. That was extremely impressive state. Six individuals in the state finals, two getting third place, three champions. It was just, it provided me with a lot of excitement. I followed wrestling for a long time, and that was great.
I think you both deserve a round of applause.
One other thing real quick. I know I talked to Ms. Cabot before the meeting about the live stream. I know that's something that's still looking on, but one thing she asked is just to see if, get more of a feedback on council on the live streaming. So I know, Corey, you've been bringing this up quite often. I would love to hear from council on their thoughts on this, and I would be in support of us trying to live stream the council meeting, and just looking to see if the rest of council would be in the favor of that.
I do know the school board did it on YouTube.
Yeah. So I mean, just to kind of give the administration a better direction that this is something we want to move forward with. We can have a vote possibly the next one, but I would like to have at least some sort of conversation, if anybody.
I think it's pretty clear what my opinion is on that. I saw that, I believe the City of Rossford is now live streaming their meetings. I think it's really important to be transparent with what we do, and make meetings as accessible as possible, so.
I don't necessarily disagree. If anybody wants, we can have a motion now, or if you want to wait until the next council meeting to have some further conversation, we can do that as well, but.
I'd suggest we wait. I'd like to try and some, obviously inform the wage, gauge public interest. I mean, we had on the phone tonight, there was no one listening on the phone.
And they hung up on the chief of police, so.
It's because they can't see your beautiful face, Tim.
I'm sure that's it. But yeah, I'd like to have a chance, give us a chance, kind of talk.
Okay.
I would also, I know the administration's been looking, if we could get a price point if it costs us much of any, if anything, to live stream it. Some of the complexities involved with, I guess, the cons of the live stream, because I think we all know what the pros might be.
The current system that we're looking at, the rest of we're doing a contract for, is for building not only the agenda that you have before you in the legislation, but also done assistance and posting it to our website, as well as live streaming and tying the video in to the conversation that's happening, which is a takeover item. So we're actually reviewing the agreement right now for that, and we're pressing forward with that. But something I mentioned to President Smith is that I actually only heard from one council member on the live stream, so I want to make sure that, that there's a consensus amongst council for the live stream portion of it.
Yeah, I'd like to see it. I think that, like, transparency thing, I think that their message, Attorney General's giving it right now in the state of Ohio here upcoming this week and next week, so I think it's a great idea to move forward with that. Even if nobody uses it, the opportunity is there, you know, someone chooses to.
Well, I'd be, Deborah Born's in the crowd, and I know that she would support it. I feel safe in saying that, since she's been recording and posting these meetings for quite some time, so thanks for doing that, Deborah.
And I know, if tonight is an example where nobody is listening or would be watching, there are times when people would be, and the public hearings and certain other events that they may well want to be part of. So I think it would be a great, land use plan, I think it would be a great option, whether someone utilizes it or not.
Well, and I think it also advertises the fact that you can watch a video of the meeting live or after the fact, you know, if you hear it's live streamed, you're going to assume that there's a database that you could tap into at any time, or at least I would.
But before we would pass a resolution, I would be curious as to what this is going to cost.
Yeah. I almost forgot. There was one more thing I wanted to address, and that was the Stacy erosion of the Homerill Plan.
I'm sure all of you guys are familiar with Homerill, where cities and townships and villages to a certain extent could make laws that directly affect them. And this Airbnb legislation is one of the latest erosion of that Homerill, which I'm very upset about because they, it shouldn't be a state issue, it should be a city, local government issue.
Alright, any other business? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Hearing no objection.